I'd like to make a motion to approve the motion to approve the second round of the date Carter, who were called the night, and fourth, who were called the day Carter, since we're calling the seven schoolmaker on the last super. That the committee of all in county needs of January twelfth, twenty twenty one, second round.
We have motion by Alderman Meyer and a second by Alderman Lawren, roll call please. Alderman Lawren?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker? You have Alderman Schoolmaker? Hey, Alderman Schoolmaker, we can see you, but we can't hear you. It looks like it's muted.
I'm trying to unmute him, but I don't want to do it.
Yeah, clear the room. Alderman Schoolmaker, can you hear us?
There we go. I had a, I had a device attached. I didn't realize it was attached. Second here not how it's, it's back to the speakers. Thanks.
Sorry, just to interrupt you that you were, you were helping out. So we have an aye for you?
Aye.
Thank you. May I add some names? That motion carries. Um, alright, so this evening, we're going to begin our committee of the whole, I don't know, with a proclamation. Do you mean to please read the proclamation from Big Brothers, Big Sisters to the third January twenty twenty one international mentoring month? Okay, whereas mentoring programs like Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley make our communities and their strength stronger by driving impactful relationships and increasing social capital, bringing up equals and providing valuable support networks. And whereas during the COVID nineteen pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting numbered resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue virtually to ensure that physical distancing does not mean social disconnection. Whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than fifty-two percent less likely than their peers to skip a day of school and youth can face an opportunity gap, but have a mentor are fifty-five percent more likely to be enrolled in college than those who do not have a mentor. Whereas almost half of teenage and adults report having mentors in their youth and those rates appear to have been rising steadily over the past several decades. Now therefore, Stephanie Aker, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim January twenty twenty one national mentoring month. I, I think the might have some visitors remotely. Is Jennifer Page on the call?
Yes, uh, I'm here with Haley, who is my little.
Hello, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you. We're both my mom.
Can you tell us a little bit about your experience as a big and a little?
Um, well, we were actually met, uh, back in July, so we have known each other, um, yeah, for just about a six months or so, and it's definitely been an interesting experience, um, diving into everything and a lot of what can done, but um, we definitely made it work. Uh, we, uh, took advantage of a lot of outdoor activities over the summer and the fall. And Haley is actually an eighth grader at Wilsonville School, and I, uh, teach band and orchestra in Moline schools as well. So we've been very fortunate because, um, Moline throughout the pandemic has been one-on-one with devices. So we've also been able to use Google meets to meet virtually, especially as cases were struggling there in, uh, November, December. And so we've definitely, um, been fortunate to have the devices to be able to connect, uh, virtually when needed. And, um, I, I'm honest with Haley, but it's really just been an amazing, um, opportunity to see how Big Brothers, Big Sisters, uh, matches. It was definitely, as a teacher, I was amazed at how thorough the interview process was and how seriously the organization takes, um, the mentorship of young Mollens and, um, the resources that they provide, um, just in terms of activities, but as well as just, um, mentoring the mentors and checking in and making sure that everything is going well with the match and um, it really has just been, and I openly experienced, um, and just such a welcome one to be able to, uh, connect with such a great organization.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for your commitment to the program and your volunteer community. Haley, what do you think of the program and how are you holding up doing remote learning?
Um, I choose to be a little.
What's up? What do you want to be when you grow up?
Um, author.
What was that for you?
An author.
An author. Oh, very, wow. Very nice. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for supporting organizations like Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing no questions. Um, oh, just a reminder for my, my Aldermen that are attending remotely, I'm going to try to keep my eye on the screen. And so if you're having difficulty getting my attention, please, you could raise your hand electronically or put a chat notice in just so that I'm sure it's not to miss you. Um, okay, we're going to move into the agenda items. We're beginning with item number one, Crown Center Private Enforcement Agreement. Chief Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm going to cover pretty much one and two together, uh, same concept. So in reviewing, uh, some of our legal agreements, uh, we discovered that some parking agreements had been long expired. Uh, David, could you, uh, put up, I just have one single slide. So the city of Moline has, uh, several different parking agreements, uh, in, in place, uh, on the left. Blackout College is expired and, uh, since they have a police force, they're not going to renew it. Rock River Plaza is expired. We have not received, uh, contact with them to renew, uh, King Plaza. Uh, since we entered into an agreement, it's been parceled out into a bunch of different parcels. We're going to remove that. Um, MTI and Subway are not responding to wanting to have an agreement. Um, so that leaves, uh, the Moline Housing Authorities vow to twenty twenty-three, a school district till twenty twenty-three. And tonight, I'm bringing you Crown Center and Donut Delight. We're working on, uh, South Park Mall and then King Plaza Condo Association kind of covers a couple of those areas of the King Plaza. I'm trying to figure that out. So, uh, Ken Menzel, the, uh, partner at, um, Dirt's Law Firm, Ace of Link, has been great in helping us craft these and by, uh, statute, uh, corporate authorities can enter into an agreement, uh, with any of these types of facilities like shopping center or apartment complex or commercial entities to enforce traffic laws on private property. So we have to have an agreement for us to do that. And so I'm bringing you two, the first one being Crown Center, the staff recommends approval. Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Lawren and a second by Alderman Meyer. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? Roll call please. Alderman Lawren?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Lynn? Alderman Meyer, I think you're muted. We're looking for your roll call.
Aye. Sorry about that. I'm not sure why that was happening.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
May I add some names? That motion carries.
Your Honor, I make the motion to approve the bill of the White Truck Enforcement Agreement, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Lawren and the second by Alderman Meyer. She, you got to come in before we, huh?
Shaffer, I'm super.
Okay. Uh, does anyone else have any questions or comments? Roll call please. Alderman Lawren?
Aye.
Bert?
Um.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Lynn? Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
May I add some names? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item will be presented by KJ Ripley. Uh, it's the abandoned residential property in the municipality relief program. KJ?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the CED staff would like to apply for the next round of the IDA abandoned program properties grant. This is round five. Uh, we've been fortunate to get round one, two, three, and four. So we're hoping for round five as well. Uh, this will assist in, uh, the demolitions in the city for residential properties. Uh, we want to apply for up to a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and we're asking for council to approve the resolution in front of them, for us to do all things necessary to apply for this grant.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Lawren and the second by Alderman Meyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Meyer?
I'm just curious, are, are these properties that we own or would you be able to use this money to acquire the properties? And if so, once they're, once they're cleaned up and fixed, are they then sold and does that money go back in the fund? Is it kind of like a revolving fund or how's that money used?
Uh, we do not own the properties that we take down with the APP grant. Um, Brad acquires, um, and normally people sign them over to the city in lieu of fines or other situations. And then we own them at that time. So then that kicks in prevailing wage. Uh, um, and then we have the demolition costs, asbestos costs, and then the disconnects for the utilities. So on average, you're looking at anywhere from twenty to about thirty-five thousand to take down a property, depending on how small or large it is. Uh, then sometimes the adjacent neighbors buy the property or has provided the property or sometimes another, uh, single unit is built on that property.
Is there any other questions or comments? Roll call please. Alderman Lawren?
Aye.
Bert?
I'll be waiting.
William?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
Is there anyone abstent? Um.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clarification on the verdict of abstentism because of your association with board membership or hideup?
Correct, here.
Thank you. Uh, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, evening. The next item will be presented by Sarah Mark. It's the Rock Island Arsenal Fire and Emergency Services Maintenance and Repair.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Staff was sent a request on Tuesday last week from the Department of Defense for a sole source request for quote for fire truck maintenance for the Rock Island Arsenal Fire Department. Currently, the Fleet Division provides the maintenance and repair services for three fire apparatuses on the arsenal and is confident that in continuing to do so, it will not hinder our ability to provide excellent and timely service to our internal customers and our residents. As requested, staff has put together a labor rate for the next five years that's going to include labor rate increases and all overhead that is typically figured into the fully burdened labor rate. This item is also going to be on the council agenda as we did not receive it until Tuesday the fifth. So this is the soonest we could get it in front of you. Staff is looking for authorization to move forward with submitting a quote to continue to provide the maintenance and repair services for another five-year term.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Lawren and the second by Alderman Meyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Meyer?
Your Honor, um, ju- just looking at this, uh, do we feel confident, I, I think that the hourly rate for twenty twenty-one was eighty-nine dollars? And I think it goes up to ninety-seven by twenty twenty-five. Um, are, do we feel confident that between uh, health insurance costs, uh, um, retirement, um, all of those things that that's a sufficient uh, number per hour to be, uh, charging out so that we don't have a situation in which the residents of Moline are subsidizing these things?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, currently, our fully burdened labor rate is at eighty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. So as you look at the incremental increases, um, I, I feel that that would more than cover the costs that would be associated with all of those, uh, those figures that would make up that rate. Welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call please. Alderman Lawren?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
May I add some names? That motion carries. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
The next item will be presented by Chris Mathias. It's the twenty twenty-one licensing agreement.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So, uh, this resolution I have before you tonight is the annual, uh, it basically allows staff to administer licensing agreements. Um, the way we do that, we, we get an application for a licensing agreement. We review it at staff. Once we come to something that we're comfortable with, um, it then goes out through DocuSign and, and, and this resolution allows the mayor and city clerk to execute that after staff administered it. So, um, we, I know there's been some questions in the past, kind of, uh, you know, what are we approving this way and then wh- what are we not, right? So this allows really very routine licensing agreements. And as you can see from the attachment that I included, there's around thirty that we did in twenty twenty. Uh, all except one are fiber optic cable bore. Um, we had one that was test boards and ride away. But, um, other than that, everything else was, uh, was, uh, fiber optic cable that was being bored under right of way. So when we have something that's not routine, which we didn't in twenty twenty, but we do have one right now that'll be coming to you next week. That's a licensing agreement that doesn't really fall into this, you know, routine category. Those will still come to council. And so for example, like what's coming to you next week is we've got a condo association that wants to put a large tree line um, and, uh, and fence it on right of way, which is a unique thing to me, but I want to make sure the council, uh, reviews. So we'll continue to do it. Now, this, this resolution allows us to keep doing it the way we've done it for the last seven years. So we would, uh, ask for your approval on that.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Lawren and the second by Alderman Meyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Lawren?
Chris, um, I was just curious, do we, when these companies are going to bore, are they required to give notice to our residents describing, um, what their product is, what their purposes? Uh, are there officially the information? Uh, and then are they required to, to restore that property back to the way it was? Um, I know that we've had some companies boring recently and they've left, they need messages. They need piles of dirt that they need and, and residents are just curious what's going on and there's no place to find information.
Yeah, so we, we've added a, we've added a one-week notice requirement into the licensing agreement. You know, thi- this would be for somebody that's coming to us and, you know, applying for permits, right? But, um, uh, I, I think I think one, one place we're lacking right now would be, um, would be staffing because you got me, you got me doing this, right? And then doing some other planning positions right now. So I think, um, I think ultimately, you know, you could, you could have a city staff person that would be handling these most of their day probably. And, uh, and I think you're, you're correct that, that it does need to be repaired. If you look right in the license agreement, they have to repair that, uh, that right of way and really put it back in the same condition that they found it.
So it'd just be really nice if there was a place on the website where we could find out who's doing it and how we contact them to ask them to come back. Because there have a lot of, when they, when they come through, you get a lot, you get calls sometimes. Have a follow-up.
Uh, yeah, we, that, that's a good point. You know, we've, we've tried to put that notice, like I said, on the applicant, but, um, I think you know, number one, they could always call, always call Public Works and ask, you know, um, you know, we're having, if you look on there too, it's, you know, getting, uh, the approval from General Preston beforehand. So there should be somebody in engineering, either my, myself, Daryl, somebody should know about this job too. So I would always encourage somebody to, you know, call Public Works too and, and try and get in contact with us. But we can, we'll look at that and, um, see if there's something we could do, you know, from a website standpoint of kind of announcing it. But, uh, it's a lot of, it's a lot of staff time involved with this sort of thing because as you can see, we're getting one pretty much, you know, these are the ones that are coming through that we know about, right? And there's one for maybe two or two weeks, it needs to be averaged of it. So uh, we'll, we'll look at that notice and, uh, see what we can do in that regard.
Chris, I have a question for you. Since we, we do have a really strong GIS program here in Moline, do you think we could kind of license to, uh, like a pinpoint on the map so that people could see the history of what has happened as well as what's coming up?
Um, we can certainly talk to Todd about that and, um, and yeah, and see what we can do. But I think that's a good idea, Mayor, to check and see what GIS could do for us in that way.
Thank you. I just, I'm thinking of the situation where we had some work and it was just, I mean, we never think it was associated, but they were laying fiber and it impacted one of our sewers. Took us months and months to figure it out. We maybe had more of a, uh, location awareness of where this was going on. It would, it would help us resolve issues as well.
That's a, that's a good point. And a lot of times the applicants, you know, these are, these are companies, they want to come in through, they want to get their job done fast. They might not be used to communities asking questions that we ask, but we are very protective of our utilities and that's part of our review process. It's telling people, hey, you might have to go to the other side of the road. Um, but that, that's the last thing that we want is especially a sewer to get hit because you won't always find that out until late, you know, a, a, a much later, uh, period of time. It's not like a water main where you're going to find out right away.
Thank you so much. I, I, I'd like something like that because then it doesn't type scout my answering questions when it comes because I know we can call you guys, but that still burns, you know, twenty minutes of your day, which is, um, you know, you're busy. Alderman Meyer?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I- is it possible to put within these, uh, agreements with them that, you know, uh, like you said, there is the obligation that they clean up and, and make sure that it's right, but put some teeth into it that says that if they don't that they have to, uh, reimburse the city for time or, um, and I'm not sure if we could put a penalty in there, but if, if it is that staff intensive to bracket down, figure where they're at, uh, having the public call in, all of those sorts of things. Um, if we have some kind of, uh, uh, teeth into it with they don't live up to what their obligations are that, uh, they reimburse the city and the residents for, uh, not living up to their agreement.
And, and I'm sure that's possible. You know, I'm sure that's possible. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure we can document it and prove it, of course, which we've done in some cases with these, you know, with these sewer bo- on lines. It's like, hey, here was a route that was approved. Here's where our sewer line is, right in line with where your, your fiber was supposed to be. So it gets, you know, in that case, it's pretty easy to document and prove it, right? So I'm sure that's something that we can look at and of course I'll work with, uh, corporate council to make sure it's sound.
Your case, I think, uh, is awesome.
Yeah, the biggest, uh, tool we have in the toolbox to make them comply is we give them no more permits. These guys are all in for multiple permits and if they're not fixing the old ones that they've got open, we hold the new ones. And, uh, so that's why having a point of contact on my lawyer's, uh, point where there all the complaints come to one spot, then we know who the troublemakers are and stop issuing them permits. These guys need the permits as the, to get paid and as their lifeblood. So that's the real incentive to, to get them to do it. You know, chasing money and chasing performance, um, you know, is a, adds to the staff intensity when you incentivize people to comply so they can continue to work uh, in the city. That's the easiest way I've found across the state to do it.
Alderman Schoolmaker?
Good point.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Did you have some other questions?
No, I was just saying, say that's a good point. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, I, I just was going to ask, isn't there, is there no bonding involved when they're doing this or anything like that that we can go back on?
There's not for this. This is a, this is an insurance, um, you know, making sure they have certificate in their name, but, um, um.
Cause they're not performing the work for us, so we don't get a performance or a material bond. We do have the insurance in the background in case they create, uh, damage to our, it's all part of our right of way ordinance, which we recently beefed up and tweaked a little bit about, you know, how people are going to work in our right of way. That's just when we think we've got them corralled, you know, these rascals find a way to get out of the pensive. Uh, so, um, but the best way again is always to hold their permit, uh, via, and then we have the insurance certificate in case they do damage property. But the undone landscaping, which is their, which is, I mean, that's the most upper end, it has the pile of clay that hasn't been turned back into seeded topsoil. Um, is always the biggest complaint and, uh, and, you know, it doesn't make much sense right now, but come spring, it's an eyesore. And so then we start holding it, start giving them the permit.
Thank you. Do you have anything else? We're ready for our vote. Roll call please. Alderman Lawren?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
May I add some names? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. The next item will be presented by Joe Coolman Beck. It's the IMEG contract for twenty-six thousand, thirty-eight hundred block to forty-first street. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, tonight, what I have for you is a proposal from IMEG Corporation for, so we, uh, we look for their help for, uh, some design work for our twenty-six thousand project that we have in our twenty twenty-one CIP project list. Uh, about a month ago, Matt Moore is a design engineer, entered his resignation with the city. And, uh, as we evaluated our, our, uh, our bandwidth within our department to get our design work done for twenty twenty-one, we identified this project as one that would be uh, beneficial to get some outside help to, uh, to speed that process up, to help us get through I dot, uh, review and Illinois EPA review so that we can, uh, so that we can accomplish this project this, uh, this summer still. Um, we saw sources with IMEG because of our past history with them and, uh, their knowledge of, of, uh, our city, uh, utilities. We have had some preliminary design work done and some surveying work, uh, completed. We will still assist with some of the, uh, survey work uh, as, as needed on this project, uh, for the design. But, uh, the staff is looking for approval of this proposal to enter in with IMEG so that we can, uh, um, complete the design work for this project.
Motion for Parker? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Lawren. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Lawren?
Joe, how far, uh, west does the design go? What, what is the, I, I see it's the thirty-eight hundred block. I can't tell on the map where the thirty-eight hundred block ends. Uh, is that where?
Just short of east of their new entrance. Um, there, there will probably be some work to the entrance with the multi-use path. Uh, the eight wide path on the north side of the road will, will extend to that entrance. But the actual roadwork will stop short of that. Um, it'll, it'll, it'll be east of the new entrance on that south side of, uh, the high school.
Alderman, okay.
And Joe, when we go to construction, our intent is to do it when school's out, obviously?
Our, yeah, our intent is to work with the school as much as possible, but yeah, um, if we, if we have, if we are able to start before school is out, whether it's because of, uh, uh, lesser attendance at the school, um, and, and still keeping lanes open, we, we may attempt that. Uh, but it will be worked in. We will do it in conjunction with the school to make sure that they have traffic flow and, uh, um, we're, we're going to try, we're going to try to get this job done this year. If we have to phase it out over two years, we, we will consider that. And, uh, and, and let, let everybody know, but, but our intent is to complete it this year while school's out before school starts again.
Alder- Alderman Potter?
Hi, Your Honor. Um, uh, the cost of this item, I think, uh, uh, is, is something that shows the reason why I was not in favor of some of the reorganization that was proposed in the engineering department. Um, I'm guessing that this, uh, amount of money exceeds the full cost of, uh, uh, what we were paying Mr. Moore for the entire year. And this is just one little project. I think it, uh, shows the value of the design and the engineering department that we probably have. I'm hoping we can continue to head down this road with this department as it was.
Alderman Lawren?
Joe, is there, uh, a provision in the IMEG contract for them to have design done by a certain date so that we can get this built this year?
There is no date in the proposal as, uh, um, from IMEG in writing. There is, uh, they do understand our, our constraints and our, uh, and, and our concerns with the, uh, school. Um, we also have to get this through the, the Illinois DOT and EPA. Um, so that we're, even if we get the design done, we still have sort of hoops to jump, but again, having the, uh, IMEG manage that for us is just going to i- is going to make sure that it's expedited, that we don't miss a deadline that we do. We're doing everything we can to get this done. It's also why we, we got it on the agenda late and it's also coming to council, um, to the council meeting tonight. It's every week we get, it is going to be i- is going to get us closer and, and to that goal. Um, we have talked with IMEG and, uh, as they, as they begin their, uh, construction process, they'll keep us, they'll, they'll keep us in the loop as how progress is going and then we'll have a they'll, they'll keep us in the loop as how progress is going and then we'll have a date sooner than later, but we did not get a date, uh, in the proposal.
One problem I ran into in the past, Joe, is that exact issue that while it's a priority for us, it's not a priority for IMEG, so to speak. Cause they have a lot of other jobs that they're designing or working on. That's something you might want to consider in the future. Putting in a drop dead date for them to give you the design, or you could run into trouble for our construction season. Just a consideration.
Great idea. Thank you for the, for the advice.
Alderman Lynn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I, I want to thank staff for getting this to us and, and doing it in a timely manner. Um, cause as they discussed, uh, the rebuild funds that have been given out to so many communities in the state, they all, all have to be, projects use, using those funds have to be reviewed by I dot. And so getting this to them as soon as possible is so important because, uh, I think there's going to be a backlog. Uh, if we wait too long to get this to them, and with this being a time, such a time sensitive project with, uh, uh, where, where it is with the school, getting it in as soon as possible is, is really important. Uh, I also want to speak to the idea that this is just one little project, uh, and, uh, and how that is affected by our engineering. This is the largest project we're doing this year, uh, probably by double of any other project we're doing this year. So this is by far our largest, um, uh, uh, construction project and largest engineering and probably the most complicated that we're doing. So it is really important that we don't just, oh, there's just one little thing and it costs a lot and everything. But the, the other portion about this is, um, I, I think it needs to be clear that over the last sixty years, on average, um, $2.3 million that were budgeted to be built didn't get built in the year that it was budgeted. And most of those were, uh, pushed off because engineering didn't get it done in time. And that was when we were fully staffed, uh, and, and all of those things. And so that's why it is so important and we're working forward to get a year ahead in engineering. So we don't find ourselves in these situations where we're under the gun, trying to get things done in a short period of time. And so that's why I think it's very important that we, uh, we do this, uh, this year for this particular, our biggest project, to get it in their hands so that we're able to build it before school starts up again. And I, uh, repeat my, um, uh, endorsement of what we will be bringing to council, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, of, uh, the projects we want to do for 2022 and get them, uh, engineered, um, and get a year ahead as soon as possible.
Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Walton.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
William. Parker.
Aye.
Lynn.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Stenmaker.
Aye.
Eight eyes from me. That much in carries. Alderman Potter, do you have another comment? Sorry. Okay. No. Um.
Sorry, Mayor, I forgot to lower my hand.
That's okay. I did only attempt it, you know. Um, it, we do not have another decision. Um, so now we'll transition into our work session if everybody's ready. I wanted to start our work session by, uh, stressing with our gratitude to Marty and his team for working through, you know, the Yeoman's Path, working through these tips and looking at development agreements. We really appreciate that you took your time and invested the effort and you know, but, um, before we get started and walking through the information, are there any other council member's sentiments or concerns that you specifically want to grab? Alderman Lynn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, while I know there is still, oops, sorry about that. Uh, while I know there is still more work to be done, I want to thank Dirk Rice, Carol Barnes, and Marty, uh, um, Bonix, uh, as well as the other staff members that worked diligently over the last eight to nine months to answer many of the questions that the council had asked of former employees, but were never given full and complete answers. As elected officials of the city of Moline, our job is to be stewards of the TIPS dollars and resources of our residents and make policy decisions to guide our great city. Those policy decisions can only be made when the councils provide accurate information and all our questions are answered fully by staff. Unfortunately, former staff members refused to answer many of our questions and gave only partial answers to others. When, uh, council continued to press them for answers that made sense of the data, they left, often complaining of micromanaging by the council, and in some cases, we now know destroying and deleting documents as they left. Well, it turns out we had reason to press for answers. I am thankful for our new finance director, our new city attorney, and the team put together by the new city administrator that has taken on the challenge to review our TIPS and development agreements and provide correct information to the council. While much of what the group found was exactly what we expected, this process has revealed a few disturbing situations that need to be read into the record, uh, tonight. Two months ago, this council directed staff in the park board to propose substantial improvements to Stevens Park based on the presumption that sufficient funds were available. Council had been told that TIP one and six, uh, were projected to have a surplus of 144,000 and 4.1 million dollars respectively. Cash flow analysis provided by staff for TIP one and six had suggested as much for many years. Unfortunately, we found out this week that these cash flow projections were fatally flawed. Indeed, the former economic development director provided these projections to the council. At the same time, he was refusing to answer other questions and about other development agreements, and while he was actively looking for another job as a city administrator. It turns out that rather than having a $4.2 million, uh, and projected surplus, a true accounting done by our current staff, uh, that was based on actual development work done and actual terms of development agreements, has revealed that in reality, between the two TIPS, there is likely a projected $103,000 deficit. Needless to say, all the hard work that the parks department did to prepare proposals, uh, for these improvements were done in vain and they were forced to cancel their work session last Thursday. Uh, yet it is my hope that we will still find a way to make improvements to Stevens Park in the coming years. I wish I could say that this was an isolated incident in which the council was provided misleading information from former professional staff, but this isn't the case. Uh, indeed, it was such a problem that the review of development agreements became part of the council's goals and had been included in the management directives to staff. Last year, we directed our new city administrator, new finance director, and new city attorney to review our TIPS and development agreements and, uh, do a full audit. In addition to the $4.3 million error in TIP one and TIP six mentioned above, we also found earlier this year that former staff took it upon themselves without any direction or knowledge of council to simply not require a developer to pay the rent due to the city under a development agreement for the river station property. Uh, they didn't collect late fees when the developer was late, not even when the developer had failed to pay for three years. And they, without council direction, chose not to hold the developer accountable for one whole component of the rent at all. Without disclosing this unilateral decision in favor of the developer and against the interests of the city, the same professional staff members tried to persuade council to sell to the developer a property that had a contracted value of $550,000 for $10 and a few parking spots for a few years. And that's not all. In addition to selling the property for $549,990 less than the agreed value, these former staff members also advised council to forgive all amounts due to the city from the developer totaling over $1.5 million. Let me be clear, if the council would have followed the advice of these former professional staff members, the taxpayers of Moline would have received pennies in lieu of almost one point, oh, sorry, 2.1 million that is due under the agreement. These actions by formal staff clearly were not in the best interest of the taxpayers of Moline. When pressed to explain their actions, they chose to leave the city rather than to provide full details to the council. Further, the report we received from Moline's new staff indicates numerous additional errors and develop, uh, in development agreements, over payments to developers, assumptions about city properties that were never approved by council, and accounting errors stemming from the work that these former, uh, work of these former employees. I praise our new staff, uh, for working to clean up these longstanding issues, uh, that they have discovered. While these issues above may be able to be explained away by a staff member intentionally painting a rosy picture to get the council to agree to developments, uh, that would pad their resume or innocent errors of just plain incompetence, what I cannot forgive are reckless acts handling the public's funds and doing so after they were warned that it might be in violation of state statute. For example, emails and memos discovered during this audit indicate that back in 2011, our former staff misallocated resources, uh, in relation to a development agreement championed by former staff's employees with disgraced developer Todd Rupphausen. I had to, uh, I have to choose my words very carefully here because the development agreement is still the subject of a lawsuit between the airport and Mr. Rupphausen. We have just discovered that the airport authority board and the city's own outside TIP consultants both alerted then city staff members to issues with Mr. Rupphausen's request for payment. Specifically, both advised the employees that the number of payments sought by Mr., um, Rupphausen to pay subcontractors and his development company were likely not true and/or not TIP eligible. Um, there were serious doubts whether the services were provided at all. And even if provided by a subcontractor, whether they were provided, uh, for a project located in Moline. When asked for further documentation and evidence, Rupphausen provided none. Still, our former professional staff members ignored the warnings about Rupphausen's, uh, requests and made payments anyway. Most likely in violation of state statute and certainly knowing that Mr. Rupphausen was in default. In making these payments, staff chose to part ways with the TIP consultant that had issued the warnings. And in taking these actions soured Moline's relationship with the airport. And to my knowledge, never disclosed these issues to the council prior to payment. To date, Rupphausen has never, uh, substantiated that the bills he submitted were true, accurate, and eligible to be paid. And our former staff members never followed up. In light of all of this, I renew my commitment made with this council to continue to ask questions and to work diligently to correct the problems that were hidden by former professional staff that are just now coming to light. At the same time, I want to reassure the residents that even with these issues, that the city of Moline is poised for some amazing things in the near future. With the completion of the new bridge and eventual acquisition of new land adjacent to the downtown, I see some great opportunities for economic development in the near future. As with the new professional staff we have recruited, we will continue to recruit and develop a professional staff and employees that will be accountable and work for the best interest of all the residents of Moline. And with that, I, I'd like to move that the, the council direct staff to include this complete statement in with the minutes of tonight's, uh, uh, meeting.
Second, Parker.
We have a motion by Alderman Walton, a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discretion on this motion? Roll call, please. Alderman Walton.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Lynn.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Aye.
Stenmaker.
Aye.
Eight eyes from me. That much in carries. I'm sorry, Your Honor, a second motion. Alderman Parker. Thank you.
And I'll give the copy of that to you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to make a comment before we have, we turn our attention to staff and their, their informational presentation? Okay. I'll turn it over to the staff then, I believe Dirk is, okay, yes, Marty.
I'll, I'll just start off by saying, um, uh, I want to thank the staff that were involved in what we called Project Colossus, which is because it's so big and particularly the heavy lifting that, uh, Dirk did. So I, I yield the floor to gentlemen from National Command.
Thank you.
Please.
Uh, maybe you want to pull up the TIP map just so we have it up. That's my only slide today. And, uh, I thank Alderman Walton. He's, uh, covered a lot of the territory about how we got here to this project. Um, it was one of the first things that I was directed to do upon becoming council, but, uh, we had fits and starts because they were itchy projects that just didn't sit right. River Station foremost among them. And right behind it came, uh, the airport, uh, the, the business park, as it's known, TIP seven. And we talked a little bit more about that. You heard some of what we know, uh, from Alderman Walton. And then we're on a clock with TIP one, which is your biggest, most complex TIP. But we have PGAV, which is a TIP consultant that are excellent. They're wrapping up TIP one in a very comprehensive way and that report's in process. Uh, and it's sophisticated. It's, it's, uh, been, it's got interrelationships with the other TIPS. And, uh, so those things got some attention and it's when Marty got here and created Project Colossus that across all the departments, we got everybody together. We dumped a bunch of stuff into the S drive. Uh, and we figured out and went one by one through the development agreements, but we had to break it up. Uh, so we have first the development agreements in TIP districts. And then using your home rule powers, you have a several TIP, I mean, several development agreements that are not in TIP districts. So there'll be a second report on those. This was, uh, we, we wanted to get back to about these for a couple of reasons. One, with what's going on with PGAV and TIP one, that's going to be essential to the work you're going to do with the Urban Land Institute. So we've got to get that focused and get that done and that's happening. Second, we had the projects like the Stevens Park project that Alderman wanted to talk about, where we knew we had to figure out if the cash flows were close because we knew enough to know that several others were not. Uh, and as it turned out, the, the TIP two, TIP six cash flows, I'll explain why in a minute. So anyway, Marty got the, the whole group together across all the departments, included JD with eligible projects that he might use. Um, Carol did, I mean, I appreciate that kind of words from Marty, but Carol did a lot of the heavy lifting. But most of the lifting frankly was done by Carol Oz. She, and she caught errors and she, she, she was just terrible. So, um, for the people at home, I, I, you know, who might be watching, uh, a quick primer on the TIP district. The TIP district, well, RDA stands for redevelopment, uh, private period, I thought it was. Uh, the TIP district is established, has to meet certain criteria, but once it's established, it sets a baseline of property values measured by property taxes. And so then the idea of the TIP district is as we bring new development to the district, property values go up, meaning property taxes go up. And, uh, the, the business above the base, the taxes, the values above the base, that's called the increment, the I in TIP. And that is used to bring more development or to create public infrastructure, which would bring more development. So it's, uh, the use of capital, if you all go back to your economics class, use of capital to get a return. And sometimes developers need a little bit of help to close the gap so that the money they invest gets a return. That's what the TIP district in general is supposed to do. And so within the TIP district, then we create what are called specific development agreements with the developer. They've got their spreadsheet and the city has its. How much is the city willing to do? And there are two kinds of redevelopment agreements. There's, if, if, say we need, that the cost of bringing water and sewer is so expensive that we can't make the project work, but we'll pay for it with TIP dollars, you can bond it. The city can float bonds and pay for it all upfront. Or if the, the help is different, where we're worried about occupancy or something else down the road, it can be what's called pay as you go. The developer gets the increment generated by the property as we go along. The better the developer does, the better they do on their rebuild. So those are the two kinds of development agreements we have in general. I wish we could say that you only had two kinds, uh, in Moline. You have a wide variety of agreements that don't agree with each other and, um, weren't consistent in our application, but we figured it out now. Uh, and so, uh, sometimes the best laid plans of mice and men fall apart. And that's why the TIPS are upside down and 2008 happened to everyone. And that impacted some of your TIP agreements. Uh, but sometimes it's because the deals were just not good and you have a couple of those. Um, I've talked about TIP one. Um, I've talked about TIP 1 and the riverfront, and so that's really not a part of this evening. Uh, that's going to be something separate. Um, what you can see here though in the map, TIP 1 is basically the riverfront of the, of the city along the Mississippi. And it's going to go away in a couple of years, but we are far from being done with the post-bridge time period. And so what you would likely experience with the new Economic Development Director is a proposal probably to come in and do a new TIP, TIP 14, that would probably go from TIP 5, uh, there right by the, uh, the, uh, bridge over to the arsenal, and then head, uh, to the east to, uh, TIP 12 now, because that's all going to be a part of redevelopment, the bridge comes down, and how we coordinate on that. So that's probably in the future. PGAV's report has been through a couple of iterations with Marty, me, Carol, Tara, and others, and it's still a work in progress and it's not done, um, but it's pretty thorough. The other thing we're not going to talk about tonight is TIP 7, as Oliver and Wendy said, you have to pick your words carefully because it's in litigation. TIP 7 was the Rupphausen agreement, and, uh, in general, it was going to bring a hotel and a senior care facility, uh, out there to the airport TIP. And, uh, it started with, um, staff, it started with Lou, and, um, the attorney was Mr. Lester. Then Mr. Lester left, and Maureen came in, and she was new, was her, her newest, uh, assignment. And to backstop all of that, the city had hired S.B. Friedman. And when the request for payment came in, Friedman said, "These don't look great." And Roger Strandlin, who was the airport's attorney, said, "These don't look great." And we paid him annual. And then we paid him out of a bankruptcy court because the developer went bankrupt, and yet we settled with the bankruptcy court, and I don't know why, um, the notes reflect, Maureen's notes reflect that Lou said, "We're not paying him any more money," and then he changed his mind. And, uh, that wasn't disclosed to council so far, as I can tell, and I don't want to get into motives too much, but that's a big problem. Uh, that was Ray and Maureen and Lou, and, uh, that allegation's ongoing, and I'm trying to figure it out. I think our relationship under the direction of the mayor of this council with the airport's gotten that, and Roger and I are working on these things. Um, I, I don't want to go into too much further about whether it violates the state statute because that's something to be figured out and help. Um, but we're not going to talk much about TIP 7. So with that, let's talk about the others. TIP 2 and TIP 6. TIP 2, uh, is located there, then TIP 6 came out of TIP 2 eventually. TIP 2 was supposed to be three phases of development, and Phase 1 got started and then sort of hit the wall, got moribund, and so we recreated TIP 6 within TIP 2, which was for the last two phases. And all of the projections written about TIP 2 originally were that all three phases would be done. And all three phases were required to be done, and when it hit the wall and couldn't, they came to council, and council rescinded that, understood what was going on in TIP 2. TIP 6 got created, and the first redevelopment agreement came back for the remaining two phases. All of the projections, all of the lifting in TIP 6 were about the idea that, uh, when completed, it would generate this money for the, the $4 million of cash flow that, um, Oliver and Wendy mentioned. Well, when I pulled out the cash flow of the development agreement and looked at them and compared them, we were supposed to get a giant increase in EAD next year, meaning that Phase 2 and 3 were both online next year. And, uh, when I asked everybody about that, they said, uh, "Oh, well, clearly it's not going to happen because nobody's broken ground on Phase 3." And when you unpack the development agreement, all of the city's heavy lifting is in Phase 2. The very little return in Phase 2, given the terms of the agreement, were burying most of our infrastructure development costs in Phase 2. When their Phase 3 was built, that's when the jackpot for the increment happens, that we don't have much more meaning to invest there, and the revenue comes in and we can use that. Well, the agreement never required Phase 3, unlike other agreements where you require both and then you project on both, and then you deal with it. If it can't get it done, you reconfigure the deal. That's not how the development agreement is written. And that is the bad news we had to share with Oliver and Wendy about Stevens Park, is that, uh, there is no agreement to require Phase 3, and the developer has no intent to build Phase 3 at this time. Uh, and we've gone back in and reapportioned the costs and what the cap is. Uh, that was a surprise to the developer, but there is an upwarding that I'm able to say, no, you're, you're not getting the full increment you thought you were getting for two phases for this one. So we've gotten, like, uh, things straightened out there. Bad news there is that, um, it's not, until Phase 3 is built, TIP 6 will not perform as represented. Uh, indeed, there's a, a note from the former finance director to Ray about it, saying, "This doesn't make any sense to me," says, "And if there's no fact, let's don't worry about it. I'll, I'll just tell council the, the complete aggregate numbers." Uh, that's, that's not how you do business. Uh, TIP 3. Moving on to TIP 3, the development agreement is good, uh, it worked, it generated the cash. The thing, um, that we missed, that Tara caught, uh, and, uh, you know, and, and I looked at it when she had already caught it, is it's a declining, uh, rebate. So that the increment goes back to the developer in some percentage, and in this case, it was a declining rebate, 5% every three years, it decreased by 5%. Well, we hadn't, the prior staff hadn't, uh, caught that, hadn't applied that. So Tara caught it, and this year we got back to equal, we got back to hope. We kept the large portion of this year's rebate, so now we're where we're supposed to be in terms of payments that we're about. So TIP 3 is now in compliance, correct? Uh, we had overpaid, but no longer, thanks to the payroll. TIP 4, uh, is no less. Uh, TIP 5, the Coney Center, uh, is going along, it's doing fine. We've had a couple of issues because there's an SSA in TIP 5, uh, all part of the development group, and TIP 5, as you know, that was also related to TIP 11 and the HOA Hotel, and, uh, but by and large, TIP 5 is operating as it's supposed to. Uh, it's also contributing to the Bass Street Landing stuff, and the SSA is working. And while we have a little dance to do with the county around taxes every year, TIP 5 is doing what it's supposed to do. Uh, we got, that, that one's in good shape. TIP 7, uh, we talked about, we're not going to talk about much more than. TIP 8, um, the, uh, TIP 8 is a subpart mall, and, you know, we, I hope to try to revive it, and things are going along swimmingly. Uh, the thing about this agreement is it doesn't require, as almost all others do, that they not appeal their property taxes. So they did, and now they're $3 million below the base that was set to the TIP. So now, that, that was worth it more to them than, than the increment, uh, of the taxes. And so now, uh, there is no increment to be paid on TIP 8. Uh, the mall is, uh, upside down, essentially, in terms of the, the TIP projection. Um, so that's a standard clause, Marty and I talked about that, that, well, every agreement new written has that. I don't know if that was lost in the negotiations or just lost, but anyways, come back to roost on TIP 8. TIP 9, uh, there is no development going on in TIP 9. That's the Horace Mann School, and there's, the, uh, interesting thing about TIP 9 is it was loaded up by prior staff with a whole bunch of infrastructure projects that it was going to pay for. And, uh, $60,000 in time, kind of nibbling away whatever's there. And, uh, I, you know, I don't know if we're doing those or not, um, but, uh, the projects seem to keep speeding down the, the timeline, but, uh, I don't know when they were last updated. But, uh, TIP 9, other than for possible infrastructure projects that might be needed, is dormant. TIP 10, um, the, uh, the developer rebates on TIP 10 had to get corrected. We, we, they weren't accurate, uh, in the first place to begin with. That's the genesis, I think, out there. The, uh, the, the calculations were off, uh, and they weren't going to the right people, but we figured all that out in the development agreement. I think part of that's because, you know, healthcare, they're assigning things and becoming different entities. But that's all straightened out, so that one's now working as it was intended to work. So it's good news on, on 10. Um, TIP 11, so TIP 11 is doing everything it was supposed to do. TIP 11's the element, essentially. Um, it was carved out of TIP 1. It includes interesting side agreements, which are very complicated. There's a total incentive package to the developer that includes sales tax rebates, hotel motel retail, uh, tax rebates, and a special tax from the SSA for it, uh, plus a special parking calculation related to events of the tax layer and others, um, all of which go into the formula for how they get paid back. And that's an accounting nightmare. Uh, Tara's equal to the task, we're just getting started though really, um, with it, but so far, so good, uh, in terms of how it's doing. Um, we're going to have to watch the accounting. And also, there's an odd thing about the assumptions in the cash flow analysis today. For some reason, since 2017, staff has always included the sale of two parking lots to private entities. And I, I've never found any directive from city council directing that these parking lots eventually be sold to the private market. I think Alex and Renew would have our heads if we sold parking lots to other people. Um, and I don't know where it came from, but it's persisted since 2017, it's carried along every year, and, um, when asked about it, nobody can find your basis. So we're going to take that out with the cash flow analysis. Uh, for a while, it was a million dollars each, and then it was 750 each, and there's no rhyme or reason for it, and where that kind of stuff comes from, I don't know. But it's not in minutes I could find, and it's not in any, uh, any sort of discussion about TIP 1. Uh, so while, um, it's complicated, and COVID has certainly hurt the hotel motel revenues and some other things, and you have set aside some of the parking stuff because there's nothing going on with the tax layer and others. Uh, aside from the parking incentives and the parking arrangements, the TIP itself has generated increment that's been defined. TIP 12, this is one where we have really good news, uh, for a moment. So the, we already swallowed the pill on the benefits. TIP 12 has two big projects, the mills up there and then also the credit. Um, and TIP 12 is important because that's also connected to the campus, uh, and is going to be the, sort of the initial first important step to head toward the post-bridge land, uh, commonwealth. And so, uh, TIP 12, the, there were a problem with the mills, and that's largely because of the failure of what we expected from West Mill and University. Uh, that failure led to the property that's known as the mills up there to be worth far less than was projected. Uh, the, the students didn't go into housing there, the mixed use for retail and other facilities for the students didn't happen. So now it's back, you know, it was just sold for $6 million, it projected to the $21. But we swallowed that, that, that's, we cut the losses with that TIP agreement, we're not paying anymore. The only outstanding thing with the mills is their parking encroachment that we rectified, that the next time they have to fix their parking lot, they have to end the encroachment and build the sidewalk, which doesn't work. Other than that, that part is done. The good news is around the credit union. I wasn't, it wasn't too long ago that I was here asking you for direction on what to do about confusion in the development agreement that had years long up as they needed to be. And in fact, the credit union finished, uh, their construction a year earlier than was anticipated by the agreement, and then the agreement was sort of skewed about when things are supposed to happen. And so what was a two-year problem generated in part by the fact that the credit union got done early, the development agreement wasn't clear or consistent, uh, and also that there's a minimum guaranteed tax payment to be made, and it's not for two years. So we worked through that as a council, uh, and then, as you'll recall, you directed the mayor and I to talk to, uh, Mississippi Department Credit Union about this, and that they should reset their expectations based on the tax bill that was generated. And they gave the mayor and I the good news from our perspective that, uh, that was just the initial early appraisal by the county, and that they fully expect their tax bill to be, I think it was not just double. And that will bring the projections on the credit union property well into the box. Uh, and that will spring on, an actual increment that we, will be timely and can be used, as we discussed, to head, uh, down the banks of the river as part of the overall growth of what's been envisioned post-bridge work. So the good news is in TIP 12, uh, that credit union property is, uh, beautiful, but it's going to be beautiful in the books, uh, right now. Now, we, the cash flow analysis means that it's worthless to you, because until the county gives us what the actual new assessment is, we're throwing a dart, dartboard, trying to guess what it's going to be. We have the current number, we're told that doesn't, that's way low. Uh, they fully expect to be more and to hit their targets. So, um, take the TIP 12 cash flow, a large grain of salt for now because we just don't know. That brings us to the last one, TIP 13, just the HOA Part of America, which was tied into the properties on TIP Avenue and Sixth, and, uh, yeah, it was a tangled mess, a tangled web of agreements. We got to the property sales, all that seems to have worked out, and, you know, while I'm in a quibble with this or that, by and large, everybody seems to be happy about the property sales and how they all worked out and where they ended up. So now we have the world's, again, second most complicated series of rebates, uh, because somehow it got tattered on what we were doing with the development. So there are, it's all motel taxes involved, there are parking rebates, there are infrastructure, uh, questions. Uh, all those things to be accounted for. We have yet to pay a property tax incentive that's, under the terms of the agreement, they wasn't scheduled to be paid yet. So that's all the good news, that's coming, and once again, you know, we're running an advisor and very sharp pencils for Tara as she works through the TIP 13 reimbursements and keeping track of, you know, that we hit the max from all of these various sources of refunding, like the back bank. Um, so that's that one. The, um, well, last piece about all of these is now we're corrected in terms of what we think the money's coming in and how it's going out. And what's next is, uh, these are now sort of tepid, I would say. And with the new Economic Development Director and, uh, the city administrator, you're going to need to get more aggressive about bringing more developments into these things. And the, the bridge will be a natural feeder for that, and the Urban Land Institute will help design some of that. But within the TIP districts, um, we think that we've got a handle now on what the development agreements are requiring. We have the ongoing litigation with River Station, um, to get that corrected into the house, but, uh, otherwise, that's the status of more development agreements than the TIPS. A few other development agreements that will be, uh, discussed that aren't in TIPS. The last thing I want to say is that, uh, there was a lot of inconsistency, and we have to be careful, and so, you know, intellectual capital, you don't know how long it goes with who it goes with, so let me just put it in a minute. There, the, the agreements are not consistent about how they calculate the rebate to the developers across the, the various TIPS, across all of them, I count the four, obviously. You can only ever get, under the statute, increment, uh, and not, not base taxes. You're not allowed to get gross property taxes, you're not allowed to. It's increment only. But for some reason, the prior Economic Development Director had a habit of, from project to project, zeroing out the base EAD, that the property had no, no value whatsoever. And so he would call the base EAD zero, and that meant it's gross property taxes. They're getting back, you know, Oliver and Wendy said last week, uh, 50% of your project cost, and you'll get 95% of your, uh, property tax increment back. Well, it's 95% of gross, because frequently, Ray would just call the base zero. I thought that was a development thing that was what the council agreed to, but it's weird. Marty and I never seen something like that where you always base out the zero. Typically, it's the kind of thing where, you know, the other entities involved in TIP districts are upset about. Um, but, uh, that's, that kind of inconsistency plagues across your development agreements. Because others, their, a base EAD order recommends to set, and so the increment is different. Um, and, uh, so that's just one lesson to learn going forward, is that we need a consistent approach to what we're going to call the incremental base EAD. In the back, are there any more questions?
Thank you very much for your follow-up information. Are there any questions from the council or comments?
There's nothing like a simulated TIF lecture, right? To just drive the crowd wild, so.
Well, I think the complex taco goal of understanding what was going on. And I understand, I think they were meeting every week, right? My, and so it was a, it was a, you know, a broad spectrum approach to make this happen. And I know it took a long time, but we all feel comfortable with that. We're just taking it for what's happening, but we're happy with the story over and over.
Well, I think I heard your message, too, that if we get our economic development coordinator up and running, that we need to get these tips up going, what's going on in the nine, what's going on here, there, and get them moving again. It's got to be a big issue for the new person.
Yeah, I've been on a couple of tours with J D tonight to, you know, look at it and possible things that just haven't come to fruition. And we even had a person who did a pre sort of development agreement funding of getting the TIF created in the first place. For some reason, we gave him the money back when we were supposed to. $20,000, small paces. Your lawyer, I mean, you know, in the background, but we did. $20,000, it's $20,000 worth. But the, yeah, so like nine, you know, a couple of people here and there, you know, it's got, it's in a TIF district for a reason. It's got warts and we got to clean that. There's no reason to put, I mean, getting where it's at. That's a lot of eyeballs going behind it.
Alderman Parker.
Thank you. So based on what, and kind of based on what Alderman Waldron had just mentioned about the economic development director. Marty, back in October, I believe it was, of 2019, we terminated our agreement with Retail Strategies. And that was over a year ago. They were a consultant that helped us get our face in front of national organizations to try to sell our story. What do you have in mind of what has taken place to replace that void that was put in there by Retail Strategies, the taking out of Retail Strategies? What have we been doing to try to market Moline?
Well, honestly, we haven't done much, I don't think, since that time. I did actually have a call with one of those companies last week to relook at the potential for doing that. I'm a little hesitant to dive into something until we have a director of community and economic development in place so that they can play out that strategy. But I think it points to what Dirk said. When my perceptions of all these TIF districts were when I first arrived, and that is, someone's taking a handout killer here. You look at each of these, each of these are an asset that we need to leverage and that each of them has a different strategy. We can employ those strategies to, whether it's retail or manufacturing or whatever it might be, we can have a strategy for each. And that's, I think, what we need to do in the future. So the retail part, I'll take a more closer look at it and see if there's something we can do immediately before we get our new record.
Marty's underselling himself a little bit on the part of D. We were working on a proposal. Marty's familiar with a group at Northern Illinois University and their Center for Government Studies. And they do some work about broadband economic consulting, not only here, but then regional. The way it got started and we were involved in getting this going was the mayor's disappointment with efforts made by the chamber. The chamber clearly picked a side, and it was the Iowa side. And so they were supposed to be our regional marketing, recruiting, all the rest. And they folded up and ignored all the conflicts. And that consternation led me to talk to a now-retired city administrator from Hoffman State who had done a regional sort of thing, how to coalesce it. Because in the conversation I had with the mayor, she said, you know, "Well, the problem for us on the Illinois side is we don't know any other alternative. We've only ever had the chamber doing this work for us. We don't have a regional side, especially one that's going to pick our side." The chamber just wrote screeds to the governor of Pittsburgh. That's not helping. So I talked to the guys at the government center and brought Marty. And Marty's familiar with them from his work here in Illinois from before. And they were putting together a proposal to help us guide not only our development of our own economic development group here in Moline, but then be the Illinois side, how we put together a group with East Moline and Rock Island and Silas to market the Illinois side sort of in competition with the Iowa side. The chamber had always drafted these, you know, thou shall not, you know, commit war against either side of the river and then pick a side. That's how I see it, that's my view. And so the war is on, as far as I see it. They're driving people to the Iowa side, so it's time for us to do it. Well, when we got to the point of hiring the economic development director, we put that into suspension because we wanted the mayor to be able to work with the development center to do that. This is what they do. So we have some seasoned pains, a healthy guy, not only our department, but then the thought. Once we have our own house in order, regionally with our neighbors on the Illinois side of the river about how we're going to attract business to the class. So forgotten, I don't know, but we discussed it in suspension for a while.
Is there any other comments?
Uh, here.
We are out of recess. I'm so sorry about that, everybody. I'm not sure what happened. Can everybody hear again? Did you miss anything important? No, you don't know.
Yes.
What point, what did you hear last? Any of the spokespeople from remote? Alderman, Alderman Scoonmaker, what did you hear last?
The last thing I remember was Dirk gushing about how wonderful the sixth ward was.
Well, are there any other comments or questions that we need to address before we move forward? Hearing none. Thank you very much for the information this evening. It was very helpful. We are going to move on.
Your honor.
Alderman Went, yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
I guess if this is kind of closing out the TIF stuff, I guess first, again, I want to thank everybody for their hard work. And I think that this was the first step in many, you know, we need to have the foundation so that we know that our numbers and what we have and our agreements are all in place and correct. But I think we still, there are a number of policy decisions. Now, some of these things, I think, will probably be done in closed session and because they will deal with negotiating and possibly purchasing land and everything. But I think we need to, now that we've got our foundation back and settled and we know that we're getting true and accurate information, that we need to now dive back in and deal with some of these larger policy issues on each one of these. So thank you guys very much for the first step. But I look forward to the rest of the journey as we get these TIFs back up and running and really increasing the value of the city of Moline.
Thank you, Alderman Went. I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening, Janine?
We did not.
Okay. I don't see anyone here in the chambers for public comment. So I'd like to close out of the committee of the whole, if we have no further business, and move into the council agenda. We will not have an invocation this evening, but we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Alderman Parker?
He's gone.
At one point, he was going to log out and try to log back in when we.
Yeah, I tried to log back. I went out and tried to log back in. I got the video, but I don't have audio, I don't think. So I just called in.
That's great. We're going to count you as present.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you.
I see Alderman Went is present. Alderman Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Scoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of January 5th, 2021. Resolutions. Council Bill 1006-2021, a resolution authorizing certain minutes and portions of minutes of executive sessions of the city council to be maintained as confidential under further review by the city council and authorizing the remainder of said executive session minutes referenced herein to be made available for public inspection. Council Bill 1007-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a program funding agreement between the city of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the city's acceptance of $250,000 in grant funding and to do all things necessary to execute all assurances and certifications to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program Round 1 Grant and authorizing the community and economic development department to begin work upon execution of the program funding agreement between the city of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program Round 1 Grant and to do all things necessary to implement said grant requirements. Council Bill 1008-2021, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with Walter D. Law and Co. Incorporated for Project 1336, 38th Street Reconstruction for the amount of $95,376.93. Council Bill 1009-2021, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one and final with the Porter Brothers Asphalt and Ceiling Incorporated for Project 1337, 11th Street Reconstruction in the amount of $22,507.88. Council Bill 1010-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for pre-treatment evaluation and local limit study for the amount of $43,300. Council Bill 1011-2021, a resolution authorizing the exception to the moratorium on hiring pursuant to Resolution 1051-2020 to hire a water plant operator. Council Bill 1012-2021, a resolution authorizing an exception to moratorium on hiring pursuant to Resolution 1051-2020 to fill five janitorial positions. Council Bill 1013-2021, a resolution approving the voluntary extension of paid leave benefits for specified employees under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, retroactive to January 1, 2021, available through March 31, 2021. And approving the extension of those benefits approved for emergency responders as set forth in Resolution 1045-2020, retroactive to January 1, 2021, available through March 31, 2021.
Motion approved the consent agenda, Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Waldron. Janine, perhaps you remember this better, but I recall Council Bill Resolution 107-2021 being abstained by Alderman Berg, is that right?
Oh, thank you.
So how do we, can we still address that in an omnibus vote?
I did not take an abstention as a no vote.
How do we reflect the abstention in this vote, though?
So I put it on the consent agenda. I see what you're saying. Dirk, should that be moved to the nonconsent for an abstention?
Yes, and we can just reflect it that way.
Okay.
It's been pulled out.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, your honor.
All right, we'll go through roll call for the omnibus portion.
Okay. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. And then we'll address the Council Bill Resolution 107-2021 with a separate vote. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Abstain due to my service on the board of Rida.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention?
That motion carries.
Other resolutions on the nonconsent agenda. Council Bill 1014-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet facilities coordinator to submit a quote to the Department of Army Contracting Command, Rock Island for maintenance and repair of the Rock Island Fire Department equipment in support of logistic readiness center. Army Sustainability Command for the Rock Island Arsenal Fire and Emergency Services Division, force protection for a term of five years with one-year ordering periods with assigned ordering officers.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Waldron, and we had a second. And I'm sorry I didn't catch, was it Alderman Parker?
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on this particular item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1015-2021, a resolution authorizing the interim engineering department manager to accept a proposal from IME Corporation for design services for an amount not to exceed $139,500.
Motion approved, 1015-2021.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
First reading ordinances. Council Bill 3001-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 27 Purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinances by amending Section 27-3100 Competitive Sealed Bidding, sub-paragraph C, and Section 27-3101 Competitive Sealed Proposals, sub-paragraph E, by adding new Section 27-4104 Neighborhood Impact to Article 4. And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you so much, Janine.
Thank you.
So now I want to turn our attention to the council's miscellaneous business. And I'll go around the room and please offer anything that you'd like to share with the council at that time. Alderman Williams?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Went?
Thank you, your honor. First, I want to apologize and I do want to thank Tara Osborne. I apologize for not including her in my remarks earlier. She has done a great job and really worked with everybody to get these things cleared up. So Tara, thank you so much for your work on that. Second, I'd like to move that we direct staff to come back to us with their suggestions for a destruction of documents policy or strengthening of that policy and ordinance for the city of Moline moving forward.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, Parker.
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Parker. Are there, is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went?
Thank you, your honor. This is, I alluded to it and, well, didn't allude to it. I mentioned it in what I had read earlier that it's come to my attention that on the way out the door, that there were a number of working documents, information that was intentionally deleted on their way out the door. Now, I'm not saying that it was nefarious and they did it to hide things. I do not know that. But it is clear, because it's been said to our staff, by staff that was formerly here, "Oh, yeah, I deleted all that stuff. I figured nobody needed it." But it has impeded this process to recreate and figure out a number of these things. So I'd really like for staff to come back with some kind of ordinance policy to ensure that we don't have issues of staff, directors, whoever, just deleting and destroying documents that create issues like this into the future.
Are there any other comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Anything else, Alderman Went?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Yes, Your Honor. Thanks. Last week, Mayor Akry and I alluded to a meeting we were going to have at Public Works, meeting with some of the staff, and I wanted to bring some of that information forward here. Start with, I guess I just wanted to say that the meetings went very well. It turned out it was kind of three meetings, but they just kind of flowed from one to the next. It was kind of a third shift coming off shift and then the two early shifts that were coming in. I felt, I think we felt, that those meetings were very good. There was a very high level of participation, and that included, you know, some very happy people that we took the time to come and some people that were pretty upset about some things. But I think the information that we took out of that was very valuable information that we can use to improve. We did spend a lot of time talking about staffing, so, you know, that's a pretty hot The mayor and I tried to spend some time discussing that and explaining why we came to the decisions that we came to and how we got there, how that affected the budget. They're very positive that Moline is in the black and we're not digging out of a hole because of those staffing decisions. And then our commitment to start re-staffing those positions as things go forward. We explained that just the day before, we had authorized, I think it was six positions, the five janitorial positions and an additional water position. And so, talked through some of those things. Couple of, I won't go on and on here, but a couple of items that were pretty easy things that I think we can affect, some change very quickly. Got brought up a couple times that council or the mayor calls into Public Works and says, "Hey, there's a, you know, there's an issue with this, that, or the other," and, you know, snow plowing right now would be the hot button, right? And all of a sudden, everything has to be dropped and staff has to run and take care of that. And maybe that's not the best decision, and I think as council and mayor, we can change that and, A, tell staff, "Hey, you know, this is something that's important, but, you know, deal with it in a normal timeframe. You know, if you can turn this around in 24 to 48 hours, depending on what it is, maybe it is an emergency." But let's bring that down. Just because council brings it to staff's attention does not mean that we need to quit plowing on the west side of town, run over the east side of town, and take care of one little item and then drive all the way back and try to start over. So, that was something that was brought up a couple times and was pretty annoying to staff, and I think we can fix that. That's, there's no reason why things need to be dropped right away. Another item was snow dispatch, and we'll visit, Mayor Akry and I will visit with staff at a couple different levels, but one of the, you know, they were a little upset, some of the snow removal guys were a little upset because they were getting criticized in the paper and by citizens last week at the meeting for the snow response. And I didn't really understand how that happened, but the police department through QCOM, if somebody can correct me if I don't have this quite right, ends up calling in the lead plow driver, and then the lead plow driver calls in the rest of the staff and gets out. Well, the triggers that the police department are using maybe aren't giving that staff enough time to get in and get ahead of the situation. So, we'd like to meet and maybe see if we can make that a little cleaner, clearer, maybe quicker. And in this case, where we had the ice issues, that certainly would be, you know, something helpful. In other cases, we might be calling people in early and maybe there's not a lot of work, so we're going to have to weigh that out, but that's something to, something that's fairly easy and we can talk about. The other item was, Mayor Akry brought a comment box in, so people that didn't want to speak, which frankly, a lot of people spoke up, and it was very good that way. But already, I know she's pulled at least a couple of comments out of there, and those comments were shared with me, and they were constructive comments that I think, again, we can build on. The other big issue that kind of seemed to go across all three of those meetings was communication. And obviously, council's very aware of this at this point, and we reacted to it, but the communication to the engineers that, you know, they were told that they could be laid off on Tuesday. Well, that was never council's intention, but that communication wasn't clearly carried through, and our follow-up was way too late, and that caused a lot of, a lot of anguish in that department that wasn't clearly represented, didn't really know what was going to happen with their department. And better communication from us or follow-up that the communication was clearly received by them would have been good. And that, I think that lack of communication is certainly, there's certainly some morale issues going on in the Public Works and Parks area that are probably related to some miscommunication, some lack of communication, and I think we need to dig into how we can improve that. Overall, I think three excellent meetings, a lot of good information out of them. Mayor Akry, if you wanted to add anything, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, well, I just want to express my gratitude to the Public Works and the Parks Department for just talking to us. It was very helpful, and I found people to be really sincere and open about the concerns that they had and the ideas that they had, and encouraged us as representatives of the council to continue that kind of level of communication. I think there's lots of different avenues that we can do that, and I'm just grateful we got to do it. But I did want to kind of step through the different things. So, Marty, one of the things was the way that when a complaint comes to us or a concern comes to the council, and I don't view myself as anything different than an email portal, you know? I mean, people tell me a concern that they have, and then I try to direct it through you or to the department director that I think would be interested in that complaint. And so, I don't have any expectation that because it flows through me, that it'll be a higher priority than any other avenue. Someone uses the GoRequest app or something like that. And I would say that generally, the rest of the council agrees with what my expectations are. So, could you maybe talk to your team and come up with a plan of how do you prioritize complaints compared to general community issues? When we were dealing with the little snow walls in front of everybody's driveways, we were getting complaints and we were responding to them on an individual basis when really the entire neighborhood had the same concern. It was just the temperament of one individual homeowner, they were complaining, but the next-door neighbor had the exact same concern. So, I think it would be helpful if we knew how staff was responding to those issues and if we need to be applying any policy to help support our response to put out fires as well as to improve processes. So, that was kind of a long, luxury thing, but what's the council feel about that? Is that a good representation of what we want staff to be doing to address this particular complaint issue? So, Marty, maybe in a couple weeks?
Yep.
In a couple weeks, could you come back to us and just let us know how you're going to handle that stuff?
Absolutely.
The other issue was what Alderman Schoonmaker brought up about the police department being involved in triggering our snow removal response. I don't know that that's true. I hadn't heard that before. So, maybe Chief Gahl, can you tell us what role the police department plays? And I'm assuming that there's always opportunities to improve our response planning, but-
Yeah, I think that there's a couple of different layers to that question, maybe. I don't want to overcomplicate it or overanalyze it, but let's say, for example, an unexpected snow event where the staff isn't ready to go, we start having maybe an unexpected slick spot on a hill, a plow that needs to go in a certain direction, or hey, it looks like it's all of a sudden starting to get bad. Over the years, you know that those pop up every once in a while, and we certainly know that we have the relationship with an on-call staff member at Public Works that is always on call that could be notified. I think in other situations, like, for example, a snow emergency where there's advanced warning, that may not apply, that they may have gone into, and I obviously have to defer to either Alderman Waldron or J.D., they've gone into a different schedule where they have maybe two 12-hour shifts, they have teams out there. I think in those cases, they may already be in the community. So, I would say, yes, we, and the police department, because they're a 24/7 operation out, embedded into the community constantly, we can contact anybody, right? Fire department for something that we see pop up, Public Works, something that we see pop up, streets, that's a common thing across all sorts of different scenarios. But I would say, in general, there may be a different, a couple different response layers there, and I would say, like, these ones that we've had recently, I would qualify them as maybe known snow emergencies. So, I guess I don't know if that answers the question, but kind of in general.
No, it does. I just, I'm not sure if the council, you know, I don't know if really any of us have a clear understanding of what the exact process is to trigger snow removal. There's something that may be a policy issue of what do we want to do? Do we want to be more conservative and put standby pay out there so that we're sure that we're going to get drivers within a certain amount of time? Or do we want to be more risky and not pay that standby pay and have, you know, just the risk that we may not have a full staff of drivers if an event comes? Alderman Waldron probably has something there. But I'm not saying that we need to debate the decision right now, but I don't know if everybody understands that there's a little bit of a cat and mouse game of trying to be as effective as possible with the taxpayers.
And I don't want to speak for J.D., he's probably on the line somewhere and probably speak better than I, but one thing to remember is Sunday night through Thursday morning, third shift is on. So, third shift usually catches a storm that starts late in the middle of the night, and then, as the chief said, turns worse, and we have to salt hills and stuff of that nature. Where you get into trouble is on holidays, Friday and Saturday. And those two days, especially on a holiday weekend, can be problematic for calling out. And then there is a certain reliance on the police department to say, "Hey, these hills are starting to get slick. Call that standby guy, and then he needs to call out." But generally, Sunday night, Sunday through Thursday, third shift is on, and then they take care of that role.
I think we just, we had a pretty unique snow event this year already, and, you know, if staff needs anything from the council to support them in, you know, getting out there quickly, because, I mean, we were investing a lot of money and time and resources in clearing away icy residential streets that if we had a different response or they felt comfortable with a different response, felt supported in a different response, we may have been able to avoid. So, I just want to keep that conversation going with our staff leadership. And then, as far as the comments that I received, so the way that I staged that was that there's a comments box that's down at Public Works, and employees are, can add comments, they may be suggestions, they may be, they may sign off on them so that I can reach out to them directly and just start a conversation with an employee, or they may be anonymous comments or suggestions. And so, I'll check those boxes, I'm the only one that has the key to that box, and so it can be quite a private conversation if they want it to be. I've got a couple of, there, one is a comment, one is a suggestion, I just want to share with you the general part of it. One was a comment about how the staffing numbers impact employees that are still here, that, you know, there is some frustration and concern because they aren't able to attend to their normal job as much as they would like to, and that they, this particular individual thought it'd be very helpful to have more staffing in place. And so, that's a great comment, I'm grateful for it. The other one was a suggestion, I just want to share it with you. It's an anonymous suggestion, so I wasn't able to speak to this employee directly, but the recommendation, the suggestion was to add a wing plow to our grader. So, we have a grader, and our grader is out right now clearing snow, but the suggestion was to add a wing plow. Now, I'm no expert on that, and I don't know how affected that would be, but I did want to share that with our leadership team so that you knew that there is an employee that had that suggestion for us. But that's all I had regarding that. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Let's see. Alderman Waldron?
Yes, last week I spoke in air, and I want to correct that. It had to do with that meeting that got canceled Thursday, where we were going to talk about that TIF. We talked a little bit about the Park Department was going to have their five-year budget ready for that meeting. Turned out, they were not going to have their five-year budget ready for Park Board review. They had to make, go back and make some tweaks, and so we probably won't see that now until the end of January on the 28th meeting, so I just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you for that update. Alderman Berg?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yes, it's my daughter's birthday today. I just want to make a public announcement of that. She's 20. Okay, so do we have anything else this evening? Oh, wait, do we have anything from staff? Does anyone have anything they want to share with the council? And I don't see anyone from the public here this evening. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, do we have anything else this evening, Alderman Waldron?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene in an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C2, property acquisitions, 5 ILCS 120/2C5.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Williams. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes and nays?
That motion carries. Would you please clear the council chambers, and we'll convene in an executive session.